Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's regular commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 13th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. Please call the roll. Mr. Frankel?
Present.
Mr. Long?
Present.
Mr. Bolston?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Mayor Petolia? And here. If you could all rise for the standing of the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any疆
All right. Any agenda changes, deletion substitutions? Seeing none? Anything from you, Mr. Moore?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
And we have no presentations. Moving on to comments and inquiries. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The first update is actually quite brief, and general guidance and direction regarding city commission meeting security protocols. I'd like to begin by briefly stating that I'm pleased to report that direction is being offered to have a permanent law enforcement presence here at Delray Beach City Hall. Much of this is possible as a result of the full employment environment we've been able to achieve with the Delray Beach Police Department, and therefore that will be taking shape next month in the month of July. Chief Major and I had an opportunity to speak a little bit about that. However, given recent concerns haven't been expressed regarding public meetings, we have a very general presentation in terms of where we're going with respect to meeting protocols and that, to ensure to the extent that we possibly can, an environment of safety, yet at the same time, there will be more to come, because of course, not all details we can disclose in this particular setting in terms of proactive responsiveness and attentiveness. Nevertheless, I think we have a good trajectory ahead of us. So again, thank you to the Department of Human Resources, the leadership of the Delray Beach Police Department, relative to the full employment environment taking shape in terms of law enforcement staff, and therefore we'll have our opportunities to be better off. Meanwhile, we have Assistant Chief of Police Daryl Hunter to be accompanied by Director of Public Works, Missy Bartletto, a very brief presentation in terms of why we are where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Commission, City Manager Moore, Assistant, uh, City Manager, excuse me, City Attorney Jalen. Public Works Director, Missy Bartletto and I were tasked with investigating placement in regards for security measures here at our City Hall facility. And I had an opportunity to do some research throughout Palm Beach County in regards to security placement and what other municipalities looks like, that one was closely related to us, and other different plans that they actually had in place. Our total objective is to utilize the best practices to ensure safety of those that attend and participate in city meetings, to comply with all of our local, state, and federal laws regarding our security policy. This security plan was to address the recent developments and concerns related to the newly passed bill, 543 Public Safety, which relates to constitutional permitless carry of concealed weapons and regulations of firearms. In regards to our statutes and applicable laws, Florida House Bill 543 effective July 1st, 2023 allows for permitless carry of a firearm as long as the requirements are met under section 790.06. Does not change provision from carrying firearms into meeting of a governing body. Section 790.06 Florida State statute allows concealed carry in most public places prohibits firearms in meetings of a governing body, and there's a violation of a second degree misdemeanor that's punishable up to jail to 60 days and a $500 fine. Some of the recommendations actually that I took back in regards to several of those meetings that I, that took place throughout the county, were signs placement announcing firearms of concealed weapons permit, metal detectors at entry points, city police officer and security guard at entry points with handheld units, all attendees to be screened prior to entry, those refusing screening will be denied entry, security guard to conduct all searches. In regards to some of the more common meetings that we actually take place here at City Hall, are our commission meetings, workshops, planning and zoning board, Board of Adjustment, Site Plan Review, Approval Board, Historic Preservation Board, Code Enforcement Board, Educational Board, and Community Redevelopment Agencies. With all of these different entities that actually take place here, there will be different measures that would actually have to be looked at in regards to it. And some of the preliminary costs in regards to vendors that I actually looked at, in regards to handheld metal detectors, and also walk-through metal detectors. These metal detectors are actually portable, so they can be rolled out and placed, you know, for, you know, whatever different meetings that we have. Obviously, there's several meetings that actually take place here at our facility, so those are portable units. I had an opportunity to actually get some costs in regards to, with some help with Missy Bartletto in regards to what these were cost, so we're actually looking at a total equipment cost, you know, a little bit under $10,000 in regards to some of those equipments that would actually be required to, to secure our facility here in regards to our commission meetings and several other meetings that take place. I'm open for any questions.
All right. Did you have anything, Missy, or you're good?
I'm good.
All right, very good. Anybody want to speak to this? I mean, first of all, let me just, I'm sorry, I kind of missed because I, we didn't have our screens up. What are other cities doing?
So other cities, they actually do have the portable metal detectors in regards to officers, the security guards, and the signs that's placed outside of the facility prior to actually entering. So it's a common practice now where municipalities are starting to pick that up in regards to the safety measures that's coming forward.
Okay. And, but, we do have rules or laws that allow for people to come in with a gun?
Absolutely. So there's a more comprehensive part of that that would take place between, you know, Public Works in regards to not only police, but fire as well, in regards to ascertain into some of those schematics in regards to that.
So some of our limitations are that we have the utility billing window in the City Hall lobby, so in addition to the lobby serving as overflow for our meetings when we have a very full meeting room, we also are doing active business. So on one side of the lobby, people can carry, carry their firearms because they are not included in a, in a meeting, and on the other side of the lobby, they cannot. So there are some, some issues just with the way that our, our building is laid out on how we would be able to, to actually provide for a secure setting.
Question based on that, because, you know, I'm familiar, obviously, going to the Delray Courthouse or the West Palm Courthouse, and I see those signs. You know, some people are going to court, and some people are going to the clerk's office, and some people's going to the self-help desk. Well, well, everyone goes through security, but as far as a firearm, I know you can't bring it to the courthouse. Wouldn't that be applicable in the fact that, sure, we're having a meeting and can't have it at the meeting, to your point, that they could have it in the hallway, but just to enter the facility, can it be a no firearm situation like courthouse?
Courthouses are specifically, certain governmental buildings are specifically exempted from the rule, the law, and so the only time that a county, a local government can impose a rule is during meetings. It's very specific in the statute.
Crazy gets crazier.
Well, majority of our meetings are towards the end of the day. Would it be an option to close the window and adjust the hours?
So one, one of the options that I looked at would be, you know, at 5:00, we talked about that, so that takes another threat out of the meeting place if it's after 5:00, so now you don't have the window that's open, where you funnel all of the traffic through the metal detectors.
Correct.
So absolutely. Now, the way we are currently, that poses a threat.
There's an overlap.
So.
Right, right. So we'd be, all right, so the 5:00 meetings would be aligned with that, but then, of course, any daytime workshops or anything like that, we'd, we'd still have that issue.
And other board meetings as well, code board meets during the day, any kind of a meeting that meets during the day would pose an issue with that.
Well, they generally don't have overflow audiences, correct? I mean, like we do, or do they?
Correct.
Yeah.
So in that case, you would set, set it up right at this.
Right at the door, so that it would just be coming in.
And then we wouldn't allow people to enter through the back door just to exit.
Right. Anything else? I, I, who would be doing, it says, it looks like, security guards. Are we hiring for that as well, or is that something that the city will provide? I know that when we had COVID, and people were coming in, our city sat out in the front and they made sure everybody was, you know, they had to put their face up into that little thing and get the reading, and then you got a little band on your arm that you had the reading. So I'm just curious as to who would be handling that.
So the recommendation would be to have a security company along with our police officer that's actually working the detail, that's actually assigned for the commission, you know, to be able to administer that. But you want to have a security guard that actually is checking, because that can get backed up, you know, just depends on, on what's going on for its commission meetings in regards to, to what we have. So we definitely want to have a security guard, and that's why I added some of those in there as well, and some of the companies that we actually have.
So that total amount of 10,000 is for an annual expense or, or initial expense? How does that, what is?
Just equipment.
That's equipment.
Okay, okay.
Much higher.
So the equipment itself is 10,000. You're, you're good for that for several years, I would presume, that the equipment will last years, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so it's an initial, and then you're talking about the security guards?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
I mean, I have to tell you, I think that it's, I hate to say it, but it's the way that we're moving. It's the direction that we're going in. Like I said, it's only been less than a handful of times that I felt really threatened, but it happens.
Direction is likewise to proceed accordingly. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate that.
The next item, coming from the Office of the City Manager, is in fact, an agent of the Office of the City Manager, Mr. Ken Edwards, the City Sustainability Officer. Given consensus recently offered relative to the Columbia University City Adaptability Index, we've initiated the necessary legwork to enable an update and consideration to this effect. Although, Mr. Edwards is the principal spokesperson, it does involve a number of departments. Likewise, the collaboration with the Department of Public Works and that of Development Services is applicable in this regard. Mr. Edwards, we will begin with you for our brief presentation regarding the process.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, Ken Edwards, Sustainability Officer for the City of Delray Beach. As you recall, at the June 7th meeting during comments, Deputy Vice Mayor mentioned the City Adaptability Index, and it was agreed to have a presentation this evening. So I did a little bit of research on that, and first of all, a short description and justification. So really, the gist is that obstacles and disruption is becoming an everyday kind of event. So whether it's pandemics, or heavy rainfall, or wrecks on the highway and fires, there are disruptions that are really occurring every day in, in modern life. So the ability to adapt to those challenges when they come up, but also incorporate tools that allow for improvement on a day-to-day basis under normal circumstances is, is really, you know, the general description. So the City Adaptability Index is a self-assessment tool that benchmarks, so there can be comparison to other organizations and the benchmarks regarding adaptability and continuous change. Self-assessment is available online, so it can be done just by staff, or it can be done with the assistance of WGI. They were one of the main authors, and it can be done on scale, so a single person, or a single department, or citywide. So a lot of the information that I have here comes from an article that was in the World Economic Forum. This was written by WGI and Columbia University Global Leadership and Construction Management. One of the quotes there is, kind of summarizes what I said, cities being able to respond in agile way using both digital and physical aspects. I mean, I refer to this as digital and physical assets, so it's using the tools that we have to be able to, to respond. And it is very important to look at the physical and the digital aspects. A example is given of the DEFCON system that's used by the military, so at different levels of DEFCON, they bring different resources and different preparedness levels online. Okay, so with that brief introduction, here is a pie chart that came from that World Economic Forum article. There are eight slices. They refer to them as pillars, and when you look at, at those, you know, it makes a lot of sense as far as city kinds of operations, sustainability, and efficiency, and resilience are certainly things that, that I deal with, but also the economic growth, diversity, equity, quality of life, health and wellness, safety and security, and mobility covers pretty much everything that the city would perform. And so each of those eight is a pillar within the system. And within the system, it is different from resilience. Resilience is really being able to respond and handle challenges. One of the additional aspects of this system is that you use those same tools in a continuous improvement kind of process. And there would be measurement associated with that, so as you go through the survey and answer questions, identify processes, you would also look for key performance indicators that would be measured so that you would be able to determine how, how you are performing. Okay, on the next slide, this is busy, I recognize, but I thought it'd be helpful to put it all on one, and I think I can condense it for you. So in the center-left column, those are the eight pillars, the same ones that are on the pie chart. Okay, within each of those eight, there are three indicators, so the survey is set up with 24 questions, and each of them starts off with how adaptive is your city in regard to, and then there are the three indicators for each of the pillars. So for example, in the sustainability and environment area, how adaptive is your city in regard to renewable energy? So for our city, this really would pertain to solar energy, so how adaptable are you in regard to solar energy? Second would be how adaptable is your city in regard to pollution control? The examples that were given really related just to greenhouse gases, which is obviously something that's very important to the Sustainability and Resilience Program, but I do see this being able to be looked at for other kinds of air pollution and, and water pollution also. So it would be adaptive regarding to pollution control measures. The third indicator in, in that section is how adaptive is your city in regard to extreme weather hazard management infrastructure? So, you know, right away, you would think of stormwater and, and seawalls, roads, and even buildings for emergency management. So again, you would answer this question. For each of them, it, it basically has answers of not prepared at all, have some planning, have done some planning and taken steps, or we're, we're doing very, very well. So another example there, just to look at the efficiency and resilience pillar, how adaptive regarding efficiency of operations? So this really would be an opportunity to take a look in a very broad way. I mean, it could be very narrow also, could select an area for assessment, but could look at efficiency in very, very broad terms. How adaptive for government decision-making, again, a process kind of analysis, but there may be infrastructure involved with, with decision-making also. And then how adaptive regarding resilience, and so ability to respond to pressures and obstacles, both planned and unplanned. So I, I tried to give a quick flavor. There certainly is a lot more to this, and, you know, at this point, if the department directors would like to touch on any points there?
Well, if the commission has any questions about any of these particular categories, how you feel, how you would like to know how staff feels we're doing in these particular categories, we're, we're open to, to that discussion.
To the commission? Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Yes, how, you, you mentioned solar energy, so how adaptable are we to solar energy? I noticed there's a lot of solicitation around in the city with people knocking on doors and saying that there's a government program to get your house changed to solar. A lot of elderly people are being approached with this, so can you speak on solar and how adaptable we are?
Okay, the only aspect of that that I'm aware of would be a PACE program, which is a loan program that has gotten, even in the last session, got attention because there are some
Predatory.
problems with the way that, that program is, is running. Actually, the Palm Beach County Attorney's Office has written letters of objection to one of, of the programs. Their interest rates that I have seen are a little bit higher than home equity kind of loan. And so, I mean, there, there definitely are some, some questions there. I mean, beyond that, though, solar energy within the city could be included in our planning efforts for our construction, and, you know, also having other kinds of outreach to encourage the community to look into solar. I mean, I, I, I will say that I have installed solar panels on my home and a battery system, and so my electric costs are pretty much zero for the year. So things like that, that, that we could do informationally, could spread, spread information, but you can even go deeper into that analysis as far as the city would want to. And really, I would say on, on any topic or process, that would be the case. As, my, my wrap-up point on, on this was, as I looked at this, it really made me think of the Total Quality Management Principle, which W. Edwards Deming really created and was taken on by many industries, especially Toyota is very famous for putting that improvement process in place where every process is up for analysis and metric recording, determine if, if processes are stable, or if small steps can be taken to improve. So there, there is a very broad way in which something like, like this could be applied, or it could be very targeted, like, like you mentioned. Let's look at solar and see if we can improve how much solar is in the community. It's, it's really wide open to direction.
So to piggyback, you have solar. Did you go through a PACE program, or did you do it yourself, or how did you get, you, you seem to be a little bit more of an expert than the rest of us in the, in the world, and I'm just curious how you, how you went about to get solar and get your, and get your electric bill to zero?
I actually wanted to learn more from the process, so I, I wouldn't advise people to do it exactly the way I did. I interviewed multiple providers and did research on the equipment that they provided, and, you know, I oversaw, got the permitting done for, for the installation, and, you know, I actually did not have the battery system installed with the first time around, so I had to do it in two parts. And the battery really is important.
Oh, sure.
Because FPL will pay less for your electricity than they would charge you for the electricity that you use when it comes
So you want to store it.
So I, I, it was a really great experience, and I'm happy with the outcome, but it is, it does take a bit of effort and knowledge.
What seems like, you know, just like Ms. Burns was saying, that's one of the, for me, even though it's expensive to install, and especially when you're going through these PACE programs, or the PACE program with some of them, it seemed like there are some companies out there that are predatory in, in nature, and, and that's scary because, you know, they tend to go to people who are more vulnerable and sell the product. And unfortunately, those people can't necessarily keep up with the payments that, you know, that they need to for 30 years or whatever the timeframe it is. But it starts with home, you know, I mean, I think that the city of Delray Beach is a great starting place to be able to kind of like, put ourselves out front first. And I think that with our builds, we should be incorporating, and we're doing a lot of, you know, right now, we're going through the process of the police station, there's going to be any number of other places that we're going to be doing that are city buildings. And I think that we really should be focused on, even if it's a little bit more, focused on how we can set the example for the rest of the city. And I think that it really starts with us first, and then it will proliferate. But when you look at what FPNL is doing, and anybody who's driven through the state, and I'm talking about going north or going north and I'm talking about going north or going north and then west, I mean, the fields of the solar panel fields are just unbelievable. Where there used to be just huge forests now are just huge solar panel fields. So they've recognized that that's how they can capture a lot of energy at very low cost. So it seems like as a city, we should be thinking about the same thing for our buildings first. And then somehow, you know, helping our citizens to figure out how to get to that next step without it being something that will be, could be predatory or whatever. I don't know how we can do that, but it would be great to be able to encourage people to get off the grid. I don't know how long it's going to last, though, because the more that get off the grid, the more upset FPNL becomes. And then all of a sudden, the rules start to change and shift. You know how it goes.
Well, and that really was why my design from the very beginning was to have a balance. And that way, and my expectation was that there would be a fee to hook up because there is a benefit.
Sure.
Like bought a smaller battery. So there are a lot of different things, and this is a good example of just one aspect of a adaptability kind of concept. And you can really look at any kind of process or any kind of building and use these kinds of process analysis or improvement.
Well, I hope that you're using some of this for, I mean, I hope that you're going to be included in some of the moving forward on some of our buildings. Because again, if we lose that opportunity that is staring us in the face right now, it's going to be 30, 40 years down the road before that building is looked at again or even longer. And so this is the time to do that, you know? And like I said, if it's a little bit more, it's probably going to be, make a huge difference in the long run for the future of our city and its taxpayers.
And I'll throw in on that point, and again, I'll use my example. And I've seen plenty of other studies to this that are much shorter timeframe. But for me, I did an analysis and I didn't use high interest rates and that kind of thing. But within 15 years, at the rate of savings that I have, I would pay off my system.
Your solar.
And my system, the major components of it have 35-year warranty, 35-year warranty. So 15 years, it's completely paid off. I would have more than twice the amount of money necessary to replace. And that's if I replace the whole system. Some of the components are going to last more than 35 years. So it is an investment, but it also is a preparedness activity. I mean, I have my circuitry done so that my refrigerators, my kitchen, my bathrooms, I have a room where I'm going to set up an air conditioner, on a wall air conditioner. It can be a real resilience kind of plan for individuals. And to your point, if we have an example as a city, then we could use that to recommend to other people too.
Absolutely. Well, good on you. And I think that that's great, and I think that you also are going to now be sitting on something that'll be more saleable than your neighbor's house because of the fact that you're going to be selling something that basically they won't have an electric bill for however long that you've paid for, which is an amazing thing. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Ken. I feel like I kind of dropped this index in everyone's lap, and I appreciate you doing a really diligent presentation here on this. I think it's a healthy sort of opportunity for our city to objectively gauge where we are in a bunch of different fields. And it, from what I've heard from WGI and speaking with them, there's going to be some countywide forums with other cities around here that will be taking part in this, and I think it'd be great if our city can be part of that conversation. And I think it's healthy for us to be able to see areas where we may have a shortfall or where also we might be leaders in the county. And so, and I do know that WGI had offered to basically coach whatever team does the survey, pro bono, coach them through how the best sort of practices on filling that out. And so I don't know if it's something we need a consensus for to move forward with doing the survey or if we need to determine the scale of it, because you said it could be done by like several members or a whole team or how, what does that look like moving forward, what's sort of the process?
Consensus to this effect would in fact be appropriate. There are some additional legwork that needs to be accomplished as we prepare in this regard. So I would appreciate that feedback and direction. Nevertheless, this will be an interdepartmental exercise to the point of the introductory comments in that regard. And prior to the city actually administering any survey instruments in that, a follow-up presentation would be made to the commission so that everybody is clear to that effect. So pardon me, I would like for us to take the time necessary to prepare accordingly, but that would be appreciated and we'll be able to go from there.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Long, you're saying WGI?
That's a company.
It's an engineering firm, a wantman group. They did our parking curbside management study.
Do we need to get clarification if there's a fee involved in participating and what that fee is, to bring it back? I mean, there are areas that I'm very confident we are leaders in. For example, we have a dray house form-based code award. We have one of the best form-based codes downtown, and I think the rest of the county doesn't. And, sorry. So there are other issues.
We have to get some emails from that.
Right, we have, I know. We have changes, yes. We have a complete streets policy that, you know, so there are certain areas where I'm confident that we're good.
So maybe we look at the areas that are
And so there might be weaknesses we can identify.
That would be the purpose.
The question for direction is participating, just bring back if there's
Correct. Could I suggest that, that maybe you, Mr. Moore, have a meeting with the folks who are running point from WGI on this to just kind of fill in some of these gaps we have in knowledge about the survey process?
We can, yes, sir. We can, we'll make that determination going forward in terms of what the level of engagement would be in that regard. That's part of the consensus mix, but it will be a collaborative approach. So given the consensus and direction being offered this evening, we will work to make arrangements accordingly as we prepare for a follow-up update to the city commission in advance of the formal administration of a survey instrument.
Very good, Mr. Paulston?
Yeah, the question was asked, there's kind of two approaches. You can take a high-level view and look at kind of all of it, or we can zone in on one item. And I think a good starting point is high-level. You obviously know where we're leaders, so we don't necessarily have to focus on those areas. And then high-level on the areas that are left over to start with.
Sure, and then zero, yep. Then we can drill down.
Yeah. Does that sound, does that sound like a plan?
It does. We're happy to participate.
All right, great. Thank you, you've got it. Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Moore?
Thank you. One last brief presentation is our Education and Workforce Coordinator, we have Janai Bowens. Given the questions and comments recently offered relative to education board membership composition, quorum requirements, et cetera, I've simply worked with her since last week to prepare for clarification in this regard because, of course, there will be an appointment consideration process coming up in the next meeting or two. And this will be a good orientation for all concerns so that everybody can comfortably offer their direction accordingly. Ms. Bowens, if you would, please, briefly.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Commission, City Manager Moore, and City Attorney Jalen. Again, my name is Janai Bowens. I'm the Education and Workforce Coordinator here to offer clarification regarding quorum with the education board. Just some background context on the education board. It is composed of 11 regular members, then we have two student members. Regular members are appointed for a two-year period, and one of our student members is appointed for a one-year period, and then the other is appointed for a two-year period. We were having issues with quorum just recently. We had two members that were out of compliance as, you know, according to the bylaws with the attendance. So you cannot miss three consecutive meetings without being recommended for termination from the board. And then we also had another board member that resigned due to personal reasons. Then two of our students are actually going to college, one UF, University of Florida, and the other is the University of Central Florida. So they were unable to attend the next three meetings and effectively resigned from their position as well. So I've been working with our board clerk here at the city in order to advertise those positions. We do have some applications that have been in, and they will be put up for consideration on the July 11th meeting date.
Very good. And so the students, I guess we had the question, do the students also, can they attend and make the quorum? Or are they?
Yes, they are part of quorum.
So they are part of the 11?
Yes, they are part of the 11. So in order to meet quorum, we need eight members.
Gotcha.
And then outside of the two that were, you know, not here due to attendance and then the two student, we did have another board member that was unable to make it due to personal obligations as well.
Why would it be eight, not seven?
Excuse me?
Why would it be eight, not six?
So we have 13 members on the board, yes.
So it's not 11, it's 13?
It's 13 members, yes.
Okay, that's with including the two students?
Yes.
Got it, okay, got it, got it. All right, any other questions?
No.
All right, well, let's get that, let's get that on the agenda so we can get your board
Squared away.
Yeah, up to the level that you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowens.
Anything else?
No, Madam Mayor, I yield at this time, thank you.
Very good, okay. This meeting is now open to public comment from anyone wishing to speak on any topic or agenda item. That is not a quasi-judicial or a public hearing item. The public will have the opportunity to speak at those two hearings later in the meeting. When the agenda items are called for public comment, please sign in, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Deputy Vice Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Michelle Dadich. I live at 23 Southwest Sixth Street in Delray Beach. Thank you for considering me for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee seat. I believe that I can assist the committee with my knowledge and experience in real estate and finance. More importantly, I feel that I can assist you with the current problems that exist in Delray Beach with a housing dilemma. I'm a licensed Realtor and a loan officer, and I have studied extensively on current laws associated with mortgage foreclosures, tax foreclosure, foreclosures by homeowner associations, assessments like those associated with the PACE program, special assessments in how the various laws affect your ability to obtain a mortgage, like those that, when you have a PACE loan on there, it affects your ability to obtain a mortgage. I've spent a lot of time in the past year finding resources for seniors, veterans, disabled citizens, and people who are simply down on their luck and need assistance to survive. In addition to working as both a loan officer and a Realtor here in Delray Beach, I own a company called PVC Rescue that provides knowledge and guidance where people can obtain free resources to help them in their current housing difficulties. The business that I involve myself in daily aligns very much with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee goals to assist people in need. Because I talk daily with people who are struggling and need assistance, I feel that I could provide the Affordable Housing Committee with valuable input that is relevant and relates to the current housing situation here in our local community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Hi, Tanyel Kusakjin, Senior Vice President, Potomac International Partners. I'm at 44132nd Street in West Palm Beach. Here on behalf of my client, Jetta Investment Company, wanted to invite you all to an open house, public charrette and breakfast that he's hosting at his building at 105 Northwest Fifth Avenue on Saturday, June 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00. That's 105 Northwest Fifth Avenue in Delray Beach. If you're interested in affordable housing, Mr. Jetta, Dr. Jetta has a property where he offers affordable housing for $500 to $600 a month. So for those who are interested in some free breakfast and learning more about this concept and the Kemp Building and the historic nature of that building, would like to invite you all and members of the community to come on out. I was also encouraged to see the security presentation, represent a security company as well called Guardian Professional down in Broward County. They do a lot of good work, working with BSO. They actually do the Broward County School District as well as major events and other buildings, whether it's Ultra Music Festival or F1 Miami or private residences and apartment buildings. They would probably be a good partner for the city in not only doing a comprehensive study, but actually having local security guards that can meet the rigorous needs of our community. So I'd love to share some of that information with you, City Manager and your police department as well, so to look at that. I know it would probably take a few days to just get registered in your system as a vendor, but I'm glad to see that the city is taking the security measures very seriously. There's an increase of tax on members of Congress and their staff, even teachers and educators as well. So I'm really happy to see that. But I wanted to just share that with you and invite you all again to the open house on Saturday, June 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Mayor. My name is Richard Gigliotti, a resident of Delray Beach. We've owned here since 1987.
What's your address, sir?
Pardon?
Your address?
172A High Point Terrace West, Delray Beach, Florida.
Thank you.
And we've made this our permanent residency in the year 2000. Today, I'm here to make a presentation to the Commissioners and to the audience on an acoustic poem that I wrote on May 31st of 2023. And that was my birthday also.
Happy birthday.
And these poems pop into my head. And this one is dedicated to Delray Beach as I can. I'd like these passed out to the Oh, I have more.
Thank you.
Oop.
More coming.
I got that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My poem, my poem is titled "Delray Beach, Florida." If you're not familiar to with an acoustic poem, down the left-hand margin is "Delray Beach, Florida." And each one of the lines in the poem begin with that letter, okay? Delray would be D and then A and so on down. So it looks like something different, but it's really nice. Okay, the Delray Beach, Florida. Delray Beach is a fantastic artistic Florida town. Every day's enjoyment will never let you down. Looking for enjoyment on either Florida coast reminds you how much you love Delray the most. A long time ago, we were called the Village by the Sea. You understand why this is the best place to be. Beaches, tennis tournaments, artists, and much more bring people from all around the world to have fun, experiencing all the joys that have been told with no home drum. As holiday seasons occur, New Year's, Christmas, St. Patrick's are only a few city-run, creating an extended atmosphere for adults and children to all have fun. Holiday celebrations for all, all fun to enjoy and see, filling the streets and other locations for people to be. Local residents and many visitors enjoy new attractions because they love family entertainment. They will never cause them any distractions. Written by Richard Gigliotti on May 31st, 2023.
We'll hang it in the mayor's office.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Ma'am, come on up.
Hi, my name is Dr. Violet Howard. My address is 1313 West Boynton Beach Boulevard. I am from, originally from Chicago, but I'm one of the basketball coaches at Atlantic High School. I also coached the city team at Pompey Park as well. So I'm here today to share with you all a resource that I feel like the community could truly benefit. I am an authorized agent with the Federal Communication Commissions for the Affordable Connectivity Program. So I've recently partnered with AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon to provide cell phone service. And not only just cell phone service, we're also working with, bringing Frontier here for broadband. I know several you maybe are familiar with Comcast, Xfinity, giving some of the residents the $30 discount on their cable. Now, we're working on eliminating the entire internet bill or the cable bill. So they're offering five years of service, unlimited talk, text, and data. I originally engaged here in Delray Beach. I met Ms. Commissioner Shirley Johnson because I have a partnership with the County's Office of Community Revitalization where we actually do food distributions here and everywhere around and everywhere around the county that are considered as unincorporated Palm Beach County every Friday. I started out at Office Depot Foundation as a program coordinator. From that point on, I have been determined and dedicated to provide resources for the communities, and not only that, providing jobs for the underserved, for those citizens that are considered as written off as, as we all know, ex-offenders. So basically, the commissioner, well, ex-commissioner invited me here to share with you all the resource. I've always worked behind the scenes, still doing a lot of work behind the scenes. I recently received the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. I also received the Honorary Doctorate in Humanitarianism for everything that I've been doing here in Palm Beach County behind the scenes in so many ways. So if you all check out my social media, it's Violet L. Howard, or on Instagram, it is I am Dr. Violet, you'll see everything that I do here. I also work with the Salvation Army. Every year, we give out bicycles to the underserved youth for Christmas. We provide toys. I also sit on the committee for McKinney-Bento for the homeless families. That's where the original resource started for us with the cell phones. I know a lot of people only know the phones as food stamp phones, but now everyone qualifies, as long as they're earning less than fifty thousand dollars a year, they actually qualify for the program. And as I stated earlier, we're operating or connecting with some of the major cell phone providers. So you guys have to excuse me, I'm a little nervous.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
George Long, forty-six Thorson Avenue. I think this is probably a compliment more than anything. I've been doing some research on parking. Boring, but I've done it anyway. And this included some, seeking some information from the city, and I, some of that information went through the city attorney's office, the request for records, very quick, very good, quick response. And some went to utilities over in Missy's office there, immediate response. I didn't find her, and I want to, but they just really got on it and let me know where we stood on all of this. So the city's staff is very responsive and cooperative on all of this, including the GIS. And also the CRA's that I hear, they also gave me some information. But I did give them a couple of sheets just showing where I was going with some of my research, because I've got a few more questions. So I'll bring those up later. In any event, I know we're talking about in-lu parking later, so I'm not going to cover that, but the thing that's kind of interesting about Delray is this sequence, this evolution that took place in the parking. We start off, we have people parking on the surface, in the parking lots, and then Delray kind of recovers from this unbelievable, someday I'll just help describe it, this slump we had with when Old School Square recovered, when Old School Square went out, came into being, the revitalization there and the CRA revitalizing. We had parking garages coming up, two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, in that, in that time. Then eventually, we had the in-lu parking programs coming up. And that's pretty interesting, because I think they're taking a turn in the other direction with the in-lu. But any event, so why am I here? Oh, I don't know, I had nothing else to do, so. Anyway, I wanted to hand out my little thing to the, some of the staff, so that, let them know where I'm going with some of the research, so they'll be prepared for my questions later on. I got about three of them I want to go into now. Thank you, bye.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Well, it's only one time around, but what, quickly, if you.
No, too quickly.
Yeah.
I know no one recognizes me here, because my name is Richard Santa, or Santa Richard. I've been a Santa Claus here in town for nineteen years, and that's how much I love Delray Beach.
Love it. Well, thank you very much for that.
I try to stay very active, but.
Glad there's no kids in attendance.
I will start growing my beard. I'll start growing my beard and putting on weight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we'll close public comment and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bullston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, we are going on to our regular agenda. Seven A is a nomination for a appointment for Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Mr. Bullston, you're first.
Yes, I would like to reappoint the current chair, Ms. Bruton.
Second.
Okay, any comments, concerns, questions, seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bullston?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Burns?
Yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Kristen Cox.
Second.
Okay, any questions, concerns, seeing none? Call the roll.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bullston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
And I had somebody else, but since Ms. Michelle Dadich decided to come here, she has got my nomination.
Second.
Any concerns, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bullston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
All right, congratulations to all the new members. And we're now at seven B. Did I put that in the wrong spot? All right, sorry, I'm just making my notes. Okay, so we have a few quasi judicial hearings coming up, seven B. Seven C, seven D are all quasi judicial hearings, and so what we're going to do is if anybody is in attendance that's going to be speaking at or for agenda item seven B, C, or D, please stand, raise your right hand, and we're going to be swearing you in.
By the authority vested in me as the notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, when you come up to speak, you'll just let everybody know that you were sworn in. I'm going to read the quasi judicial hearing rules into the record. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi judicial rules. The applicant and the city will be allowed to speak for fifteen minutes to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present and agree not to speak. The city commission, staff, and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. At this point in time, we'll have staff go ahead and enter, oh, I'm sorry, disclosure, nonpartee disclosure. This is for resolution number one hundred dash twenty-three, and this is the Brick Tops Restaurant. Is there a second one on Brick Tops, or is that the only one? That's the only one. Okay, very good. Any, any disclosure?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Schiller briefly.
Same spoke with Mr. Schiller?
No.
I don't believe on, on this topic.
If anything, it would be on my server. I didn't speak with anybody either. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to go ahead and now enter the file into the record.
Good evening, Anthea Geniotis Development Services Director, and I'd like to enter file twenty-two-two-three-hundred into the record. And Mr. Costello is here at the presentation of the request.
Very good. Good to see you.
Evening Chair, Mayor, Commissioners, Jeff Costello, JC Planning Solutions, Delray Beach, Florida, three-three-four-four-four, representing Brick Tops, along with my esteemed colleague, Neil Schiller. This, this proposal involves a waiver request to the LDRs with regard to light transmission, with regard to glass in the CBD. The property, as you all are aware, is on Northeast Fifth Avenue, just north of Atlantic, twelve Northeast Fifth Avenue. And the proposal is construction of a new five thousand square foot restaurant, various site improvements, including, you know, dedication of appropriate rights away. And at the May sixteenth meeting, you all approved the in-lu parking fee request for nine spaces. And the waiver at this point is to section four-four thirteen F-five, F-four E-one-D, to increase the light transmission reduction in storefront windows facing Fifth Avenue from the twenty percent to thirty-six, thirty-six percent to comply with the Florida Building Code, which was adopted in two thousand twenty. We have a couple samples. And this here is twenty percent, and this is thirty-six percent to comply with the Florida Building Code. So it's a little bit deeper tint, but not totally obscuring the interior. So quickly, that's the.
Appreciate that, yes.
It gives you a real, real example, and you will be able to see within the structure. As you could see on the elevation, all the windows are on the east side, facing Fifth Avenue with the awning and the outdoor dining area. Also, so there's the glass visualization that we presented to staff until we got these samples, and these are a better, better presentation for you all. And so as, as indicated on the slide, you know, there would no be, there will not be any aftermarket tinning or filming applied to the glass. All meet the performance standards, it's fabricated at the factory, and the windows will be, will have sixty-four percent light transmittance, not a deep tint, and we'll see just a little bit, as you can see, tinted in appearance. So this, in the Florida Building Code, the energy conservation, the, this does not comply, or will not be an exempt building. There are exemptions to the, to the rules, however, this does not, is not one of them. And so with regard to that, we do need to request a waiver at this time until there is an amendment to the LDRs. And so as, as you can see on the slide, deposit of findings can be made with two-four-seven-B-five, and this, as far as the findings are concerned, this will not grant a special privilege in that a similar waiver could be granted for another situation to comply with the Florida Building Code. And then there's also the other additional waiver findings in the CBD on your screen. Again, this will not have a increase or have an impact on the pedestrian experience along Fifth Avenue, which is a primary street. The activities, the interior will still be visible along that entire front, we, on that frontage. We are still providing eighty percent of that frontage of windows, which to comply with the retail and restaurant requirements in the CBD. So therefore, we respectfully request approval of the waiver, and we're available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much to the staff.
Okay. I'm trying not to backseat drive Fernando, because I do. Okay, Anthea Geniotis Development Services Director for the record. So really quickly, you've seen this project once before. It came before you, I think at the last meeting, the one prior for an in-lu, so I think you're familiar with. Ultimately, it's a new construction of a new restaurant. And Northeast Fifth is a primary street. That matters because some of our downtown regulations adjust for what's considered a primary or secondary street. So primary streets are those where we expect to have a lot of pedestrian activity, passersby looking into businesses. This is the property on the right today with the, the building that used to hold the Bethesda thrift store, the box, and then
Bargain Box.
Building, which is, I think, if not the oldest structure in the downtown. So this part, this building is being replaced by a new building. And the issue that's come up at hand is that the Florida Building Code recently increased its energy efficiency requirements for new construction. Just as a note, historic buildings are not required to meet those new standards, because the greenest building is the one that lasts a hundred years. So for new builds, though, there's a combination of, it's not just the glass. Your energy calculations are a combination of the exterior wall, the sear ratings of your air conditioning systems, the roof materials, things like that. The architect representing the applicant is not here, but ultimately, because we have a storefront requirement, downtown requires eighty percent of the facade to have glazing across it. So that over time, as businesses go in or out, it's actually programmed to be part of that Main Street activity that we want on our, on some of our downtown streets. So that limits the structural, the structural, what you make the building out of, because you have to span a lot of glazing, okay? So there's a lot of glazing, and there's, so the energy calcs have led that the clearest that they can pass is thirty-six percent, which is on the left, on my left, and that versus the twenty that is here. And I'm very happy that the applicant brought the samples, because it's hard to understand what that means. And as the energy code has increased, we've been faced with a lot of construction that is almost mirrored in its, its execution. The glass appears greenish, whether it's a tint or the actual glass component, it doesn't matter what the end result looks like. It's a very green building or green window. So I think it's, appreciate the, the samples, because we have to make some decisions in terms of whether we continue to require eighty percent across the facade of our downtown buildings to have this storefront glazing. I've already reached out to Mr. Gibbs, who was the DDA's consultant for the shopability analysis, just to see if there's a reduction amount that he thinks would not make a requirement. Suffice to say, we are likely going to have to come back with a change. This is just the first waiver that you're seeing. So this is an example, basically, of what we're taught, what we've got for downtown requirements. You have, your building has a base. It can be up to three feet tall. It can be as thin as nine inches, so very modern or very traditional. There's a lot of room for different applications. And what you see with Brick Tops is that the restaurant itself has clear glazing. This is actually their kitchen space that is extending across there. They told us when we told them they had, we don't have blank walls in downtown Delray Beach, that their kitchen staff was excited, because they have another location where there's windows and they prefer it, so they're not sitting in, you know. So ultimately, this issue has been very important to the DDA, and I have to admit that it had not come up when this building went to the DDA, but in fact, this part of the building was blank at that time. And it was only through these calculations and adjustments that you see the version before you now, which will ultimately go to sprawl. So in terms of adjusting the rules, if this waiver is successful, and if we see more requests, then of course, we will take that to the DDA as well for input. So right now, the waiver before you is to allow a light transparency on these downtown front-facing windows to be thirty-six percent, which is darker, instead of twenty percent. It would be in the grayish amount that's being presented to you here, and not in that green mirrored tint. There's a new building coming up on North Federal. We received some complaints about, but that's ultimately why it's there. So the criteria the applicant has gone over with you, and I'm here for any questions that you have. With Central Business District, any waivers go before sprawl first, and they voted six to zero to recommend approval.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So at this point in time, we're going to invite anybody in the audience who would like to come up and speak on this issue. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Is there any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony from either this applicant or the?
Thank you very much.
And the staff? Anything for you? No? All right, very good. So discussion with the commission. Yeah, I have a question for you. If that's what the, the new, or that's the new, what was it, the state's?
The energy code has.
Okay, so why aren't we considering that?
Okay, so that's a good question. So the energy code doesn't say your glass has to be thirty-six percent tinted. The new energy code requires a set of points that you achieve through the combination of your construction, your percentage of opening, your roof, your sear factors, all of these things that were put together.
Okay.
And just for the record, my discussion with the architect in terms of why can't you find some other points somewhere else, she satisfied my questions when we were talking that she has to move to a metal stud load transfer system, because the front elevation has so much glass on it. So the way she's constructing the building, there weren't more points to make up. Obviously, we don't, our code doesn't want her to, doesn't want the building to have less windows facing the street. So, you know, there's, you know, there's only so many points you can find with different things, and so ultimately, their request is to use, to achieve the energy, and it has been, it's a more aggressive code, and we're finding our way through it now. So this, this is the. So, um, this, this is the change they're asking for, but I don't think that every request we're gonna see is gonna be thirty-six. Some people may be asking darker and that's part of why I'm not ready to bring a recommendation for a full-scale code change until I understand it a little better.
Gotcha, okay.
If I may to piggyback, there were two methods for the calculation. One's a prescriptive method, which actually would provide a darker tint. And this is the building calculation method, so they wanted to go that right to try to make it as light as possible.
Because I, it.
That's the.
Sure. Just, just for, this isn't their request. Because I was gonna say, it, there's just not that much of a difference here that would really cause me any concern. I don't know about my colleagues, but I look at that and I say, wow, it's, now that's a good difference between the first and the third, but between the first and the second, I just, I don't see it being that big of a, a difference and I don't have a problem.
The default calculation assumes your glass is this dark. So when we asked them to push it to a more transparent, this is as transparent as they could get and still get the points required for permit.
So if that's thirty-six, what's the one to the right? Is that fifty?
No, it's, it's over, yeah.
It's forty, yes, it's forty-four.
Okay, okay.
The opposite of forty-four, so it's.
Sixty-six.
Sixty, no, fifty-six, right?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Gotcha.
Fifty-six, sixty-four, eighty-one. Our code is eighty.
Gotcha, all right, very good.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolson?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
All right, congratulations, guys, good luck. We wanna see, can't wait to see the restaurant as we're on your way. All right, resolution eighty-five dash twenty-three. This is also going to be Anthea. Um, so let's go to, um, the, uh, any, uh, ex parte communication. This is, uh, two-twenty northeast First Street. Sorry, here.
I spoke with counsel for the applicant.
I did as well.
Same.
I spoke with the property owner, sorry.
Okay.
I spoke with counsel.
Okay, and I'm, I'm, just anything, it would be on the server, didn't speak to anybody. So we will go ahead and have the project file entered into the record.
Um, yes, I, Anthea Genotis, I'd like to enter file twenty-twenty-three dash zero-five-seven into the record. And the applicant is here with the presentation.
Very good.
Hi, good afternoon, Ellie Zacharitis, Dana Miscolbakman, Fourteenth Southeast Fourth Street in Boca Raton. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, the Property Owner Investments Limited, to request, respectfully request, an in-lu parking. Uh, so this is the property, um, my client recently purchased a significant portion of Pineapple Grove. You have the railroad tracks to your east, you have second to, Second Avenue to your west, um, and Atlantic Avenue to your south. So this is the existing site plan as it sits today. The property was developed actually in the sixties primarily as an office building. Um, it is significantly underutilized in certain portions. There have been some changes of use since that original office, but not in its entirety. Um, and a lot of the buildings have sat dormant, so we're trying to change that. As I noted, my client Investments Limited recently purchased it and put in a very large investment and continues to do, to do so. So the two buildings that are highlighted in red will be the subject of today's discussion. And these are just a few slides to orient you as to what the buildings look like. That's it. So this is the proposed site plan. Again, the two red buildings were previously office, we are looking to convert those to restaurant uses, um, and those are highlighted in red, excuse me. And then in blue is currently just a vacant, it's just a vacant green space. Um, we'd like to utilize that as outdoor seating. Again, we're trying to bring the vibrancy that you find on Atlantic Avenue and in other places in the downtown into this area. Uh, restaurants are really the best way to do that. Uh, we did look at potentially retail and/or office space. Unfortunately, due to the location, especially the building in the center, it's just somewhat off the beaten path. So we really want to attract and create that vibrancy in this area, hence the, the proposed change of use. Um, so with this change of use, again, for those two buildings, it triggers, um, a parking deficiency of thirty-three spaces. So I know there's been a lot of talk in the city as of late regarding the parking in-lu or the payment in-lu process. I also understand that there is zoning in progress. We, luckily for us, submitted prior to that zoning in progress change, I think we are one, if not two, of the last payment in-lus that are gonna be before you. But what's more important about our specific property is literally right across the street to our west, you see our property, our subject property is in yellow. Uh, directly to our west is a big blue box. That is an existing parking structure that houses five-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces. Um, additionally, we have highlighted, highlighted other locations in walking distance to the subject property that also houses additional unavailable parking. So we did an analysis specifically of the parking garage, because I really do believe despite that there's additional parking available outside of the parking garage, because of the close proximity to the parking garage, we did do an analysis of the parking garage surplus and availability. And what you see here is during the peak-peak, and by that I mean a Saturday in peak season, that five-hundred-and-twenty-five parking space garage is only half-full. So we, you have a surplus of two-hundred-and-sixty-two parking spaces, again, during that peak-peak time. We also did an analysis off of peak and the results are the same, approximately fifty percent of availability within the garage. Uh, we were also informed, actually by the DDA, I didn't know this before and I apologize for that, but we were informed by the DDA that there is an incentive that there are the cities looking at to encourage employees within the hour, in the area to park on the top floor of the parking garage. That top floor houses ninety parking spaces, so assume arguendo, which it probably won't be, but assume arguendo that all ninety parking spaces are taken up by employees, there is still a surplus of a hundred-and-sixty-seven parking spaces. And again, that's during the peak-peak. So we reviewed the code and we work closely with staff and ultimately, we believe we've met all the criteria. We have been able to, um, provide and show that there's adequate public parking within the area to satisfy our thirty-three parking space request. And with that, there would be obviously the fee, which is just shy of three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars that would be paid to the city. Um, and last, I, I just wanna note that what I love about Delray, and I live in Boca and our office is in Boca, but we come here very often, I don't think that I've ever parked my vehicle here and went to one and only one place and then got back in my car and went home. Um, that's why I come to Delray and Lou, staying in Boca sometimes, don't tell Boca that. But the reality is, you come to Delray, you either Uber or you Lyft, or you drive, but you park your car and you walk. That is what's amazing about Delray is it's the pedestrian orientation, you go from one place to the other. Uh, so with that, we're trying to bring that vibrancy into this portion of Pineapple Grove. We believe there is parking in very close proximity, specifically across the street. And again, you have the majority of your users that are frequenting multiple locations and not just one. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do the staff report?
Thank you. Okay, so, um, again, you all know the property. It's actually a fairly large property downtown, two-point-four-six acres of mixed use. And the consideration of an in-lu of parking fee request is associated with changing the use, moving away from some of the spaces that were used for office and commercial to restaurant. Uh, there's a little bit of shifting around, but ultimately, the net result is there's an increase in the amount of restaurant, including incorporating an outdoor use area that wasn't programmed before into outdoor dining. So, now, um, ultimately, the result is that to do the change of use that's proposed to bring in a pretty significant restaurant use is, um, that thirty-three spaces would be required. It's also, I'm gonna try to give you the history on this. Um, there are forty-five spaces on-site today. This is, we don't have to go through all of it, but I know that when I bring you these analyses of different, uh, types of uses and how the city has evolved over time, keep placekeeping in mind, the rules have changed through the decades, and so there's a lot that goes into tracking down what exactly is the requirement for this shift. And this is part of why we're gonna have the zip, so that we can untangle where we're trying to go in the next era. Ultimately, the, um, there were some modifications that were improved in, okay, so first of all, the project, the property was developed in nineteen-twenty-five, nineteen-forty-eight, nineteen-sixty-one, we have files going all the way back to there. In nineteen-ninety-four, the modifications that were improved, at the time, um, there were no parking requirements at all for reusing our buildings. We were in a very different place than we are now, we were trying to attract investment. So every space that was out there was sort of considered access because we wouldn't have required you to put any parking coming into a building at all. So in twenty-twenty, so that's considered, the spaces there were considered a credit. Um, there were use conversions in two thousand and one, so we're going back twenty-two years ago, outdoor spaces off, you know, added, there's different ways that the credit has evolved through the staff, um, reports that we were able to trace and the different site plan approvals. So long story short, um, the last time they changed, which was, did a significant change, which is in two thousand and sixteen, when Pure Life came in, ultimately, that, that transition required use of these credits. And so there's an eighteen-space credit that is on the land right now. And I have to tell you that when I came to work here, this is one of the hardest things for me to understand. I was calling them ghost spaces. I don't understand why there's ghost spaces, either there's parking or there's not. Is it just it's non-conforming, but the use is allowed, so the user should be able to go in? I mean, this took, this has taken me a long time to track through the history of twenty years of approvals to understand how it is that this community has been dealing with parking. And it's still the biggest issue we have today. So after all of this research, which took three of us, um, the in-lu parking fee for this change would be thirty-three spaces. And this is not a small fee that the applicant would have to pay at the time of building permit, but it is a one-time fee, which is something else we've talked about when we adopted the zoning in progress to take a minute to look at our in-lu fee. This is, there's one more behind this one. So, um, the proposed use change requires fifty-one spaces. Now that is the difference between the hundred-and-seventy-nine spaces that the use theoretically would require today, remember there's forty-five on-site, and the two-hundred-and-thirty that restaurant changes would require. I know, I knew you were gonna look at me like this, mayor, so this is, I'm trying really hard to have it all worked out. So, um, so ultimately, that's how we get to fifty-five, there's an eighteen-space credit, therefore, there's thirty-three needed. Now, in order to accept a payment in lieu of fee, this commission has to determine that there are adequate public parking area, uh, parking options available. I also want to point out that while there are a lot of public parking options available, we have been approving in-lu after in-lu after in-lu with that assumption. We also have a new employee parking program that we're getting ready to, to launch to support our downtown workers. So the, these transportation study that was submitted with the application indicated that fifty-three spaces were available in the garage across the street. So if you're taking, do we think that this change directly across the street should, should receive sixty-two percent of that availability at a peak? Keep in mind, that last meeting, the sushi restaurant on Sec-, on Third, received a waiver of twelve spaces and Bricktops received nine the meeting before that. Now, at the same time, if, you know, not holding all of these buildings to an inflated parking requirement is part of the reason we revitalize downtown. So you have to consider that, that, um, this parcel is big enough to be completely redeveloped with plenty of parking probably in a structure. Is it more important to maintain the scale of what is there now and make this allowance while there is availability in the garage or not? These are all the things that the new in-lu considerations need to, I think, take into consideration. And ultimately, is in-lu something that we should reserve just for tinier parcels to keep that increment and that character as opposed to larger ones? Historic properties, other things like that. But right now, the only finding that you are supposed to use is are there adequate public parking options to support this fee instead? And that's what's before you today. Um, they are in Area Two, it's ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars for space, that results in an in-lu of parking fee of three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars into the in-lu of fee parking fund. Um, that fund is limited to use for parking, but also bike, um, bike ped improvements, you know, that would theoretically also be offset by alternative mobility options as well. So generally, they've been used for adaptive reuse, which this is, as opposed to new construction, Bricktops is a little bit of a one-off. So the payments would be due at the time of building issuance. Um, since this is only the use change, there, there isn't really a site plan change being associated, this would be interior improvements to the existing building, would likely go straight to building permit. So this may be the only time that you see this, it just depends on the extent of the facade changes that come forward, but, um, just to be prepared that this is not about the design of the building, this is purely a use call, whether shifting that office to restaurant, um, is appropriate, um, to be supported through adaptive reuse with in-lu. The DDA reviewed this and they recommended approval, um, but they have continued to raise the concern about employee parking options and off-site parking options for employees. Um, the Parking Management Advisory Board reviewed this and they made a recommendation to approve as well.
Okay, very good. So this is, um, also a quasi-judicial hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this, it, um, the resolution eighty-five, I guess, just twenty-three, please step forward, state your name and address.
I have not been sworn in.
And you, yep, thank you.
Roger, right here, please. By the authority vested in me as a notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I wasn't intending to speak, that's why I didn't get sworn in. Uh, my name is Jim Chard, I live at, uh, four oh one Southeast Fourth Avenue in OC, OC Alda Park District of Delray. Um, I have, uh, I have served on both the Sprab Board and the Historic Preservation Board, and I'm always the guy that supports in-lu, as you probably all know. This one worries me a little bit, and I, I, I don't mean to suggest what you should vote on it, but the thing that caught my attention was that fifty percent number on a Saturday in the garage. I would like to know more about that number, because the last two times I've been in that garage on a Saturday night, it was full to the brim. And people were coming in, driving around and around and leaving because there weren't parking places. Or they were, just like they do on the surface, going round and round in the garage, waiting for somebody to move. So, uh, I would really like to know where that fifty percent number came from? Was it during the daytime? Was it at night? And those last two times that I mentioned from personal experience were not during season, they were after season. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Christina Morrison, one thousand Lowry Street in downtown Delray Beach. As a little bit of background, I served seven years on the Pineapple Grove Arts District Board, um, so I'm very familiar with this property. And I just wanna remind that, um, I'm sure you all remember, but, um, when you're looking at Pineapple Grove coming off of Atlantic, going into Pineapple Grove, this property, when it was used as offices for Meisner Electric, was like a dead zone. Um, people had to get past it to get to the really good stuff that was in the heart of Pineapple Grove, all the, all the galleries and the restaurants that were there. So, um, the in-lu is up to you, there's, I think there's some room for, um, reconsidering since this is an adaptive reuse, we should be looking at all the possibilities. And when you look at what's happening to downtown now, you see a lot more walking, you see a lot of bikes, which is dangerous, that's another story, but, and you see a lot of golf carts. And there's not a lot of parking assigned for golf carts, so maybe some of the parking on this site could be reconfigured to allow two- So maybe some of the parking on this site could be reconfigured to allow two or three golf carts where there used to be one car. But reimagining this site into a retail restaurant center would really serve to help all of Pineapple Grove. And it would really help us to activate even more Pineapple Grove. So please consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Back to staff and the applicant. If there's any cross or rebuttal testimony, that would be the time.
I just wanted to close with, and thank you again for your time, but this is exactly why the payment in lieu was created, and it was specifically for this adaptive reuse. It was not for new buildings. It was to take, as the nice, kind lady I heard, I forgot, didn't catch her name, stated, this is a dead zone. We are trying to bring vibrancy into this particular block. And quite frankly, this is exactly why the payment in lieu was created. So with that, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, anything? Okay, very good. To, to the commission? Yes, Mr. Bulston.
So, another request, from what I understand, we're down to one in the queue? One more in, in the queue. Anthea, you continue to make, bring up all those points that we obviously will review as we, you know, look at this entire in-lu, whether or not we want it, or how we want to have, what's it look like in the future. But till then, it is allowed. This is why it was created. I, I'm surprised that I didn't think about how this impacts Pineapple Grove. If the Pineapple Grove Board was still around today, I assure you, they would advocate for this, because it has been a deterrent to that traffic continuing to, to move down into Pineapple Grove. So, that was a really long explanation of that. I'll be in favor.
Okay, very good, Ms. Burns. Anything?
Yes, just, I, I like that term ghost spaces, because I'm, I'm in the same space, and looking forward to moving forward with determining some new policy about this in-lu parking. However, going with staff's recommendation and the DDA, I'm in favor.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So.
I'm sorry, not the Vice Mayor, Commissioner Frankel, sorry.
Thank you. You know, I, I heard somebody talk about the DDA is coming up with their employee parking program. Well, according to Coastal Star, that was in two thousand fifteen. No, I'm looking at the Coastal Star. In two thousand fifteen, the DDA is working out the restaurant employee parking plan.
I, I thought the city was looking at employee planning?
I'm just putting on the record.
Right.
That we've been talking about this since two thousand fifteen. Okay, let me explain to you how you have an employee parking program. Put meters in the railroad lot. And I'm gonna bring up something in, in comments that will reinforce that, but we're not on that right now. The one thing I, I will say about the property, and I walk through it quite a bit, just because it's kind of my cutthroat, is they do have a paid lot that seems to be full at all hours, and it is right across from the garage. So I think the garage would be utilized, so I will also be in favor with my two colleagues. Thanks.
Very good. Ms. Long?
Yep, I'll keep it short. I'm in favor of it, given the recent votes we've taken on, on similar ones for, you know, just to be consistent, and especially since this is right across from our largest parking garage. I'll be in favor. Thank you.
All right, and I, I'm on the fence on this one, and I think I'm probably gonna say no to it, only because of the percentage of the number of, of the spaces that are required to meet their, their, their requirement. I do appreciate the fact that it is an adaptive reuse. I think that's great, the scale. Is that, let me ask you another question, because this was something I was kind of toying with. If they do use the adaptive reuse, and then they change, and they wanna build something, is, does that change? Or is the in-lu just automatically going to be gifted?
So right now, the way that it works is that once you've paid the in-lu for those spaces, those ghost spaces are added to your tally.
Oh, wow.
So as, yeah, so that's, you know, these are, these require so much research on staff's point, digging back to before files were digital as well, so.
I understand. Okay, very good. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Bulston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right. Good luck. All right, moving on to seven D. This is Bliss on Fourth, located at ten Southwest Fourth Ave. And this is also a quasi-judicial resolution, one-ten dash twenty-three. So let's start with the disclosure of ex parte communication.
I don't believe any on this one.
Frankel, no, Mr. Long?
None.
Okay, none. And I don't think I have any either. I don't recall it. So at this point, what we'll do is go ahead and enter the file into the, project file into the record.
Good evening, Anthea Geniotis, Development Services Director. I'd like to enter file twenty-twenty-two dash two-two-three into the record. This is a site plan approval of Class Five, and the reason that it is escalating to this body is that they are utilizing the residential incentive program downtown, which requires approval via recommendation of SBRAB to this body.
All right.
And Ms. Blenke is here with an overview. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be back before you. As stated, I'm here representing Bliss on Fourth with a Class Five site plan that does include the residential incentive program component. So for reference, the property that we're here to speak on today is highlighted in the pink box. Immediately to the east, you have the police station, and then followed by the courthouse and the library. You have to the north, the tennis center, and then Strip Center. That includes various retail and commercial uses. That's along Atlantic Avenue. Just to the west, you have the Checkers. And then south of the property, you actually have a city parking lot that's across from the police station, followed by residential development, for the most part. So the future land use is commercial core. It is within the CBD. It's within the West Atlantic Subdistrict. And the property is just about zero point three-three acres, so a third of an acre. One thing I wanted to discuss upfront is the West Atlantic Master Plan. So this master plan was adopted by the city in two thousand and twenty, so it is a fairly recent master plan. And the ultimate goal is aligning the West Atlantic neighborhoods with the success of the rest of Delray Beach. And not just in terms of appearance, but in terms of equitable access, economic opportunities, and the creation of wealth and health. So this property is located within Subdistrict Three of that master plan, and it's identified as a key area for development opportunity. And that's because there are a significant amount, amount of vacant spaces. And the master plan identifies these vacant properties, as well as those that are currently developed, as prime opportunities to provide additional housing to meet the needs of the city of Delray Beach. And that's particularly why this incentive program has come into place, recognizing the needs for affordable housing. So the comprehensive plan allows for a base density with an increase provided certain programs are put into place. And then the land development regulations implement those comprehensive plan procedures. So for this particular property, you have a base density of twelve dwelling units per acre that can go up to thirty dwelling units per acre with the provision of affordable housing. And so we're providing, or we're proposing to provide about twenty-seven percent, or twenty-seven dwelling units per acre, excuse me. Here is kind of an aerial of the property. It is developed with a pretty dated residential structure. There's a lot of vacant area around it, and then again, to the south, you can see we're immediately next to a city parking lot. This is the proposed project. It is a four-story structure. The ground floor would mostly be parking with a small retail component, about a thousand square feet or just over. And then you have three floors of residential units, three units on each floor for a total of nine units. This is just the proposed ground floor plan. We have twenty parking spaces. There is a gate, but that gate would be open during business hours, so that visitors coming to the retail space could utilize those spaces during the day. And then, once that retail establishment closes, the gates would close, and residents would have a key fob or something to that effect to provide them with access. We are meeting the land development requirements in terms of the maximum height, the architectural styles, the streetscape improvements. And again, going back to that master plan, this particular area is identified as a primary area for priority streetscape improvements. So with this project, we would be making some of those improvements to really enhance this portion of the city. This is just your typical residential floor plan. Again, you have three units on each floor. We would be providing two affordable housing units. That's the twenty percent required per the code. One of those would be moderate, and the other would be for low-income qualifiers. Most of our landscaping is proposed around the perimeter of the property. We have a variety of trees, large trees, shade trees, accent plants. And we also have a rooftop amenity deck that would provide additional landscaping and visual interest on the top floor of the property. It's kind of a passive recreational area. There's seating areas. There's a small area for grilling or things of that nature. No, no rooftop pool here. And so again, we are here before you because of this residential incentive program to go from twelve dwelling units to, excuse me, twelve dwelling units per acre to up to twenty-seven point three dwelling units per acre. And pursuant to that residential incentive program, that density increase can be afforded. Should we provide at least twenty percent of the total density with affordable housing units? Those could be onsite, offsite, or through monetary contribution. We are proposing to do them onsite. And the workforce housing units shall be equally distributed between the low and moderate income levels, which we, again, are proposing to do. We do meet the required findings. I think your staff always does a very extremely thorough job at going through all of those. Again, we meet the comprehensive plan requirements, the consistency and concurrency requirements. And, you know, one thing that was noted in the staff report that I think is also important is there's a pedestrian dead zone that currently is occurring because of the community facilities that separate the main downtown area from this West Atlantic neighborhood district. So with the courthouse, with the police station, you don't have pedestrians that are actually traveling to the western portions of Atlantic Avenue. So the new commercial opportunity will also enhance the activity in this area, hopefully spark further redevelopment in this area to hopefully eliminate that dead zone and provide additional life to the Western Atlantic Avenue corridor. Again, we are consistent with the comprehensive plan. We have a couple objectives and policies highlighted, expanding the housing supply by allowing different types of units in a variety of locations. You know, again, implementing incentives in the LDRs such as increases in density, to establish workforce housing units within targeted areas, and utilizing workforce housing programs and incentives, again, to encourage that provision of workforce housing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Very good. Thank you. To the staff?
Okay. I'll try to go quickly, so I'm not duplicating. The applicant, I think, has given, you have a thoroughly thorough overview of the request. So again, this, while this had, had a single-family house on the property previously, it is Zone Central Business District in the West Atlantic Neighborhood Subdistrict, which provides for slightly less intense development than you see in the core of downtown. So what's before you is the resolution would be approved in Class Five, the landscape plan, the architectural elevations, and the density increase. The SBRAB report that's in your package provides that full analysis for the Chapter Three performance standards related to new development. Ultimately, the reason the request doesn't stop at SBRAB, but it comes here, is because there's an increase in the density being requested from twelve units to thirty. Then West Atlantic Neighborhood allows this increase as an incentive to include workforce housing. In this case, twenty percent, it's minimum, that's been provided. One unit would be a low income, a low level, and the other would be the moderate, which goes all the way up to one-twenty AMI. So the proposal is compliant with that performance standard to have that, that increase. Unlike other parts of the city, where there's a separate conditional use that goes through Planning Board, and then SBRAB sees the site plan in the downtown, we've consolidated that consideration into one project. It just comes together for your review, and it's, you're able to see the design, the layout, the parking, the landscaping, all of it, rather than, you know, some of the struggles we've had in other areas of the city. So you are taking final action because of the density increase. It is a four-story mixed-use project. They, the project is not required to have commercial uses incorporated in it, but nonetheless, I think, to forward some of the goals of the West Atlantic Master Plan, to try to pull that pedestrian activity, even if it's happening during the day, for workers or attendees in the government buildings to go west instead of east. You know, I think it, it does help with that, shift that energy towards the west. It's well within the FAR limitations. The style before you is Masonry Modern. It was submitted prior to the requirement that it be approved, you know, earlier in the design. So it's well within the height limitations. It provides all of the parking needed. It exceeds the EV charging station requirement that we have downtown. They're only required of one. They're proposing two. So again, the Wiedman Building is here, and then it's behind it, across from the police station. So the standards, the performance standards, which is the Chapter Three review, require making sure that everything is compliant with the land use. That's ultimately the density increase that you see before you. Concurrent, which is, you know, water, sewer, schools, all of those things have been evaluated and are provided in the background. They have received a TPS letter from the county stating that the traffic is, is within the requirements, and there is no requirement for a fee for this project by the school district. The, again, this is somewhat deplisted. This is a good view of the site. It's here where this arrow is, rather than looking at it as an aerial. And again, in terms of the comprehensive plan, that's when the Atlant-, the West Atlantic Master Plan evaluation comes in as the redevelopment plan that applies to the site. It does identify Southwest Fourth as a priority street to receive upgrades in the streetscape, which this project will provide as part of its, its building permits required to meet those standards and increase the landscaping and other things. The, again, it meets or exceeds all of the requirements. There is, because this is a small infill site, there is not a civic open space requirement that is required for a property this size. We do have a technical note that will be resolved, you know, that can be resolved administratively. The code requires floor-to-ceiling heights be clearly indicated that they're meeting the minimum. But honestly, if the building had to go to forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, because it's something that's well within the limits and something that we can, we can finalize prior to certification. So again, we've gone over the workforce housing that's required, required. The landscape plan is in compliance with all of the regulations. So despite the fact that a much larger building is coming, there's a significant amount of landscaping that is happening. So the elevations themselves are subject to the findings in four-six-eighteen. And those are basically that there's, the, the minimum requirements, this applies to every building in the city, that they show proper design concepts. There's an honest design construction. It's appropriate to the surrounding areas. So this is a, a much bigger building, but it's well within the limitations of the redevelopment that could happen. And if this criteria cannot be met, you must disapprove it. So you have to determine that the plan or the proposed structure is conformity with good taste, good design, that it forwards the city's image of beauty and spaciousness and harmony, and that the project is of a high quality, and that it would be in harmony with the proposed developments in the general area and the comprehensive plan, somewhat subjective. So to help make it a little less subjective, the downtown- So to help make it a little less subjective, the downtown does have adopted design guidelines. This is the Masonry Modern design instructions. All styles are required to have a base, middle, and top, no matter how modern or traditional they are. And that this type of style anticipates flat roofs, that the building would be white, light-colored, there might be wood or stone accents. This building does provide all of those. It expects that the ratio of glass to wall emphasizes solidity. So there's different things at that. There's examples, and I actually thought this was hidden, but there's examples in the design guidelines. So this is the building before you. It's difficult when you're looking at an elevation to see the parts of the building that are back, the parts of the building that are forward. However, the staff review, you know, it shows a lot of it is consistent, including the fact that there's a roof terrace, which is indicative of this type of style, that there's outdoor areas, so you have a porch on the ground floor, you have another space above. While there's no roof, it is a place to be outside in a small building downtown, which is nice. This is a simple style. It uses pretty pure geometric forms. Again, the wood accents are on the porch. This is an easier way to understand it with a rendering. I think the only thing that, you know, sometimes with this style can be a little worrisome is the boxing features around it. Well, to move into more modern language is the kind of thing that can look dated really quickly, and so we're a little careful with those. And ultimately, I think that's why this design has, or this design style has moved into the changes that we've had. However, this one was in before then. Also, you know, you're supposed to have a structurally expressed building, and these are really skinny little columns that are holding up a really heavy cantilever, but outside of these two details that were brought up in the TAC review more than once, this is the building that is submitted for your consideration. It does bring a lot of good things to the table, including exceeding some of the other minimum standards. So the DDA reviewed this in April and recommended approval six to zero. Following that, the SBR, which acts as an advisory board for projects like this, made a recommendation of approval four to zero. And I'm here if you have any questions.
All right, very good. Again, we're on a quasi-judicial hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come speak to 7D, Resolution 110-23, step forward, state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I was not sworn in.
Okay.
I was not aware.
Another one, anyone else will be speaking that wants to be sworn in? Do it now. Get the stand.
Admit.
By the authority vested in me as the notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the full truth, and nothing of the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. I, again, apologize. I didn't purview the agenda, and believe it or not, yesterday I was down.
Name and address, I know we all know you.
I should know this, I should know the drill.
Just for the record.
I'm anxious, I'm sorry, I apologize. Shirley Johnson, 701 Northwest Fourth Street, Delray, 33444. I was just downtown with the owner of the Wyman Building, and as I was crossing from the public parking lot in front of Bliss on Fourth, I noticed the new sign. I informed Mr. Thomas that there's a new sign, and he said, "I wasn't aware of it." So not only was Mr. James Thomas not aware of the sign and this wonderful, beautiful building, he was also insistent that nobody's talking about the fact that the sewer line leaves from the property line, goes halfway down the property, and then crosses over into his property to get to the Atlantic Avenue sewer line. So he's not aware of this happening. I noticed how they politely went over the fact that the property is boarded on the north by the Wyman Building. I don't even know if the city's aware that the sewer crosses Mr. Wyman's property. So I don't know how that impacts this, but you're getting ready to do something. I'm sure the sewer line is going to affect this project. And secondly, there is, we just completed talking about parking. I don't know where they're going to park. It really is a parking concern. So I was texting him, and he's a little upset. Nobody ever contacted him to say this was going on. I don't know if there's a requirement that any projects must consider the adjoining properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi again, Christina Morris, and I still live at 1,000 Lowry Street. Just wanted to.
You were sworn in.
I was, yes, thank you. Part of the presentation was the fact that this property is not using the adjacent city lot for their parking. They're self-parking all on the site. The other positive about this proposal is that it may create a spark in that area that would move a lot of other people forward in redeveloping that area and really activating it into the neighborhood it used to be. So please support, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Alice Spence, 707 Place Deventer. Can you put the picture back up? Turn it around so that we can see down fourth.
It's the one with the wire. Come on. It's the, it's the wire in the building one.
I can show you this.
That one, okay.
I mean, it's going here, here. So this building's there, and then this building comes in next to it.
Okay, and that's the beginning of a huge residential area. And I'm just concerned that something this big is going to overshadow all these single-family homes. And I, okay. I just am concerned that the construction will take down the trees that are on the property. And it's the entrance of a very residential area, and it needs to keep on looking like the entrance with the trees and the shrubs that are there. And when they take down the trees and the shrubs that are there and put up a big concrete thing, it's not helping the appearance or the prices in the neighborhood to have this big structure there. And unless there's some way that the structure can be lowered so that trees could be placed around it so it will disappear, I think you need to look at what this structure as proposed will affect that very nice neighborhood that's back there. Please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Back to staff and applicant. Any cross or rebuttal testimony? We'll start with the applicant.
Hi, just one point of clarification. I did check with our engineer for the project, and there is a sewer line that runs along the northern perimeter on our property. I'm not sure if the adjacent property owner connects through that. There is an easement being provided over that sewer easement so that he could continue to connect, assuming that is the case. I have no knowledge of the sewer facilities that are serving his property, but there is a line located on our property, just for clarification.
All right, very good, thank you. Anything more?
Just that I would, I would confirm that our records indicate that the sewer line is on this property. In the event that once things are under construction, something is not, then the applicant would be required to, you know, hook up in an appropriate manner at that time. But right now, the anticipation is that the lot, the sewer line is on their side of the property line. And then related to the tree question about so many trees being removed, the mitigation is considered during the new site plan, and it's been fully evaluated. I'm just looking, is there a payment due or is it fully planted?
That's a good question. I'm not entirely sure. I do know there is a significant tree located essentially next to the checkers at the northeast, northwest corner of the site that is being preserved, that is a very large tree. But did you find that information?
Okay, so the proposal includes the removal of five trees and four palms with an existing tree that will remain, one, the one. The existing tree counts as one of the required 23 trees that are required, and the proposal includes installing 22 new canopy trees and four palms on the property around the perimeter.
Can you put that, that plan up again?
I don't know if you were.
I had the landscape.
I know you had it in here.
Did I?
Yes, you did.
Okay, hang on. Which one of us have it? Yes, okay, I think yours was bigger, but, yes. So this, I'm trying to, this is Fourth on this side. And then all these trees and palms are moving around, and the one, larger one is staying. So the building, parks underneath the building, and then all of the perimeter and the streetscape is where the trees are installed.
Now, if you take a look at that, well, I mean, I just want to make sure you guys are done with rebuttal testimony and cross.
Yes.
Yes, okay. If you take a look at that, and then you just put, put back up the picture of the front, because I can see there's five trees on the front here. No, the front of the, what they're building, what they, their picture. There. I see one tree and nothing else in the front. You see what I'm saying? Now, I don't know if they do that so that you can see.
So you can see the architecture. And honestly, this is, I, staff will know, they hear me say it all the time, you can't go off the renderings. You have to look at the architectural plans and the, this, this. So they're pulling pieces away so you can see the full building.
Understood, understood. I just wanted to make sure that that was a, kind of a change-up that we weren't seeing. Got it. All right, is there any, any other questions or concerns? I have the commission, yes.
Just, there's a house on this property currently, right? This is directly behind the, okay. And you did verify that the sewer line is located on the property, that there is a sewer line.
That will service the property.
Correct. In the concurrency evaluation, the location of both the water and the sewer hiccups were identified for this property, and they are there. The other issue that came up, I'm sorry, was public notice. This type of application does not require mailers. You know, it does require these two hearings, so the SBR meeting first, and then ultimately City Commission.
Okay. Anything else from, no? I only have one concern, and I know that this isn't something we're going to be able to resolve, but I think you're going to probably run into this. And that is the parking under, parking where it's going to be shared. And so you're going to have it open where people can pull into spots, and people are living there. I don't know if you're going to have assigned places or spaces, but if you're sharing that space and somebody's coming home and someone's in their quote-unquote parking space, I can just see that as being kind of an issue. I'm hoping that it doesn't change where the people that are trying to go to the, to the business are now having to seek parking outside as well as the, you know, as well as the employees, because that seems to be what happens. We seem to always see a shift. You've got all this parking that you're going to provide, and then there's this shift that it's really, hey, you're on your own, this is, you know, we're going to be using this for our, for our own. And that's, that's a concern that I have, because there isn't, you know, that shared thing doesn't always work, and especially when you're talking about people who are living there and kind of feel like that's their space.
Right, no, I completely understand. And operationally, you know, we're going to have to figure that out with whoever the retail tenant ultimately is. There are nine units and 20 parking spaces, so even if, say, one parking space was assigned permanently to a residential unit.
Another floats.
Then you can float the others. And presumably, people are out working during the day. I know that's changed a lot post-COVID. I work remotely half the time. But, you know, presumably, people will be out more during the day while customers will be coming. And I believe there is on-street parking available in the area, and then also the city parking lot that I understand is pretty vacant most of the time.
And that was another thing I was going to make mention, because I know one of the, persons that came up were concerned that it was the beginning of a neighborhood. No, there's still a parking lot between this and the neighborhood, so there is some buffer space there. And then just to my colleagues, all the more reason to look at that police station as a dead space, because it's two spaces, it's two, two very large, you know, blocks of, you know, governmental buildings that really kind of make it so that it's very difficult to attract. And we, we think about that one space on, on, that we were just talking about on Pineapple Grove, it's, that's, and, and that's not a complete dead space. I mean, pure green and others are, it's still actually very active, so it's a very small part of that. We're talking about two full blocks on West Atlantic that are dead. So we might want to really think about what we're doing with that pu, that police station and possibly, you know, really consider it, because again, this is the time to do it. All right, you're going to have my support on this, and I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say, but if not, let's move to a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bulston.
Yes.
All right, there are no public hearings or second readings. We're moving to just first readings, and we've got ordinance number 10-23.
In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the City of Delray Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter IV, zoning regulations, Article 4.6, supplemental district regulations, Section 4.6.19, tree preservation, protection, enforcement, and maintenance. To remove the fee schedule for the land development regulations, establish mitigation requirements for palm trees, require mitigation for trees and palms with less than 50% condition rating, modify the list of nuisance plant, nuisance plant species, and adopt clarifying language, amending Exhibit Appendix A definitions to modify the definition of exceptional specimen tree, and to delete the definition of specimen tree as duplicitous. Providing a conflict clause, providing a separability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. This is first reading.
Yep, first reading, so.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bulston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
And the second first reading is 9B, ordinance number 25-23.
In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Delray Beach, amending Chapter IV zoning regulations, Article 4.3, district regulations, general provisions, Section 4.3.4, base district development standards, subsection K, development standards matrix, development standards matrix hyphen residential zoning districts, to amend the required setbacks for duplex development in low-density residential RL and medium-density residential RM zoning districts, providing a conflict clause, a separability clause, authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. First reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bulston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes, and now 9C, also a first read, ordinance number 11-23.
In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Delray Beach, amending Chapter IV zoning regulations, Article 4.6, supplemental district regulations, Section 4.6.16, landscape regulations, subsection E, landscape design standards to adopt regulations governing the use of artificial turf, and subsection H, minimum landscape requirements to prohibit the use of artificial turf in the right of way, and amending Appendix X, Appendix A definitions to adopt a definition for artificial turf and to amend definitions of open space, providing a conflict clause, a separability clause, authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. First reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bulston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
All right, moving on to comments and inquiries on non-agenda items. Mr. Moore.
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
Okay, Attorney Jalen.
I am requesting two shade meetings. The first shade meeting is in the matter of Sherman Williams, American Legion Post 188 versus City of Delray Beach, and then the second is George Gretzis versus City of Delray Beach. I was looking at potentially having the shade meeting on June 30th. We're convening that morning for an executive session for the IAFF fire contract. So that session is supposed to commence at 8:30. We should be done at approximately 9:30. I don't think it's, it'll go that long. I really only need about 15 minutes for each of these, just to have a quick discussion and update you.
Piggyback it on the backside?
If that's okay.
Fine.
Works for me.
So we'll do Sherman Williams at 9:30 and Gretzis at 9:45, so we just announce them separately. So I'm requesting a shade meeting pursuant to Florida statute 286.011 in the matter of Sherman Williams, American Legion Post 188 versus City of Delray Beach, case number 50-2021, CA 012581. I'm requesting 15 minutes to discuss settlement negotiations and strategy. Attending that meeting would be Mayor Petrolia, Vice Mayor Bulston, Deputy Vice Mayor Long, Commissioner Frankel, Commissioner Burns, the City Manager, myself, and a certified court reporter, as well as our outside counsel, Sanaz Alumpur. So I just need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bulston.
Yes.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
And I'm also requesting a shade meeting in the matter of George Gretzis versus City of Delray Beach, 50-2021, CA 013987, on June 30th. That one will commence at 9:45. I just need 15 minutes to discuss settlement negotiations. In attendance at that meeting would be Mayor Petrolia, Vice Mayor Bulston, Deputy Vice Mayor Long.
In attendance at that meeting would be Mayor Petrolia, Vice Mayor Bolston, Deputy Vice Mayor Long, Commissioner Frankel, Commissioner Burns, city manager, Terrence Moore, myself, and a certified court reporter.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, let's start with Mr. Bolston.
Okay, um, first, I would like to say congratulations to the Fire Department Recruit Class Two Thirty-One. Chief, you put on a uh a great um event on Friday night and uh also with all the awards that were given out and a lot of the promotions, so. Second, I would like to say thank you to Parks and Rec, any other staff, and of course, our Police Department for the Pride celebration this weekend. Whether, and I don't know if all my colleagues know, but some cities across our s- uh state canceled.
Yeah, withdrew.
Um, and uh we moved forward, but they made a lot of uh really smart decisions to make sure everyone was safe in this current environment. And I'm really proud to say that Delray Beach was able to move forward in a uh in a in a safe way, so thank you. Uh, thank you for that. I want to, I was curious to get an update on the parking uh meter technology. I know that we have s- found out that we can provide a discount using the uh Park Mobile app and where, so where are we at in that process?
I plan to offer an update during the next meeting.
Okay, great. And I I was wondering if staff has considered doing maybe a permit pop-up? You know, there's, as as we as we learned, two people, whopping two people had the downtown permits, which I know more do now, and the beach permits. Well, what if we, what if we were able to do a, like a pop-up at the at the green market? You know, and say, hey, for the next two weekends, you want to get your permit, you can come down, we're going to make it easy for you. Because I went online to do it and you you know, you got to get your registration, you got to scan it, you got to upload it and so forth and, you know, there's a lot of our residents that aren't going to be able to do that and they might not be able to come during the week. So to do maybe just a few pop-ups at the green markets for locals.
Will they have the information that they need, um, like their?
So you need a driver's license and your registration.
Right, but I mean, if somebody's coming down to the pop-up, typically it's, they wouldn't even know that it's there. It would be, so they wouldn't have their necessarily have their registration on hand.
Back to their car and get their registration.
You should have your license on you and your registration should be in your car, but.
Or the next week.
I would say put it out to the public that, hey, the next two weekends or we are going to be there, come down. It'd be just such an easy way for everyone to start taking advantage of these resident parks.
But also we'll put it out there that it's available and that's something that, you know, a lot of people don't even know.
Yeah, you might just be walking by the green market and go, what's this?
Right.
So I think that would be a good idea that when we have it and we want people to sign up for it. That's all I have.
Ms. Burns?
Yes, I also wanted to um shout out to the Parks and Rec uh for the Pride Festival or event. I went to it, it was really nice. Also, the ladies who are over the senior club at Pompey Park, um, they do such a tremendous job. I think they're just returning from an out-of-town venture, but I joined that once I um retired from the school district and I enjoyed the the few days. I I that was where I just got some downtime and enjoyed myself, but I'm just very impressed with the activities and the time that they take with our seniors in our community. So uh um they, I just want to commend them. Um, this um, I know Miss Betty Wilson, I ca- um uh the director, they just do a tremendous job and I just wanted to give a shout out to them as well. And I wanted to ask a question um of uh, I guess, Anthea. So once uh the uh coals are changed in reference to the glass that we were seeing, is it necessary for that to come back to city commission to approve? Like, once you develop the new coals for whatever they're putting?
Then we won't have to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and and usually when we bring waivers before this board and then there's another one on the same issue and another one, we know the code needs to adjust. If they've been repeatedly approved by the commission, then we know the code is off. This is the first one of this type under the new energy code, so, you know, once we kind of get our arms around it, then we'll adjust the code in a text amendment and and you won't.
And then staff just can.
Yes, you won't have more of them.
So so the thing about it is, is she said during her presentation that she doesn't want to adjust that right now because this was the first time and we may not see any more of them and it may not be worthwhile because, again, when you're going from one to the next, a lot of times people start to try to push it even further to the darker and darker. And so this way it it gives her some flexibility.
Right.
But if we're seeing a lot of it, that'll end up what happens.
We just need to, and we really want to avoid the the ref- the reflective and the green tint that sometimes doesn't look like.
Appealing.
Yes, appealing. So so we're still learning a little bit on how to change it.
And I guess I'm not referring to just that, maybe paint colors, shapes of things, you know? Like, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Burns?
Uh, that's it, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Frankel.
Thank you very much. Um, two things. One, at the Tourist Development Council, uh, last week, we ratified some grant awards uh from the Cultural Council and the Arts Garage, AKA the Creative City Collaborative, with a ninety-six score. One of the highest scores received one hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars. And Spady with a ninety-three point three-three score received one hundred twenty-nine thousand seven sixty-six.
Beautiful.
Now, that's good news. Unfortunately, I have two pages of wonderful cultural uh groups in the county and that's the only ones in Delray that received anything. Which means hopefully those that are listening would like to uh maybe apply because there's county money out there. And uh I'm happy that uh those two groups did get significant awards, but hopefully some others will apply. And the other thing I had was I wanted to thank Lynn and I wanted to thank Missy because I was walking down to one of the Pride events over the weekend and Saturday at twelve thirteen, I was walking through the um employee lot, AKA the railroad lot, and I see a sign with a a blue cone, says, please do not park here. This is parking spot is for blank employee cars. So another reason why I think it's very vital that we do something with that. Well, I don't know if I want to read it on the record, but it's the, it's the business that is there. If we had meters there and we didn't have nine hours of parking, maybe these problems.
I don't understand how anybody puts a cone up in a city parking lot, period. Um, that is not acceptable and I think that, Mr. Moore, you need to send this code over there and tell them that's not.
I will say, Missy, handle it immediately.
It's been handled as of this weekend and so direction is underway. I did touch base with Mr. Frankel about that as well and as of this weekend, we're squared away because I was made aware and direction was offered accordingly.
Okay, and so what was the thing you said before, the first one you were talking about? Oh.
Oh, just the.
There was a, uh, just just so you know, um, I just have to get, hand it to Marjorie Waldo. She sent a request for the city to send a letter of support for another uh grant that she's uh working on. She's on top of things and obviously she's getting a lot of those grants coming in and it's really paying off, so I just wanted to say kudos to her for continuing to make sure she's following where she can get the money. Um, and that's just, it's wonderful.
Congratulations.
All right, very good. Mr. Long, you're up.
All right, um, well, just to echo uh Vice Mayor Bolston's comments, uh, I was also at the uh graduation on Friday, so congrats to the uh new recruit class two thirty-one and all the folks there that got awards and promotions. And uh and again, to um join my colleagues, I want to congratulate and thank uh Parks and Rec for putting on an awesome uh Pride Festival this weekend and thank uh our Police Department for having a really diligent presence there. We had several folks I knew from out of town that came in and were really impressed by that. Um, so it gave me a lot of pride to hear that. So um, just briefly, just since you brought up the the employee parking garage, are we going to have a a parking workshop still at some point? Like, what's the, what's the schedule for that?
So what I'd like to do is offer a brief update during the July eleventh meeting relative to the parking technology piece, which will enable an update in terms of where do we go from there. So we are working to get to that place, so.
We do have an LOU parking. Do we have a a workshop coming up on that? No? Yes? No?
As far as the LOU piece, we'll be making arrangements that, so what I like to do, ladies and gentlemen, is follow back up July eleventh and that will open the door to all the rest in every regard.
Okay, because I know when when we first talked about parking, we hadn't really figured out what to do with that employee lot initially and now we have, we brought up the additional revenue stream now from the new parking plan and how is that, what are we doing with that? And so there's, I feel like there's a lot of things to figure out here still in general, so having a more broad sort of parking workshop, I think, would be great.
Yes, sir, and I think the genesis for us at the staff level, when we reviewed these considerations, this would be squared away on the technology side because, of course, that will connect the dots in terms of other opportunities. So give us that opportunity July eleventh and that will offer a path forward.
Perfect. So one other thing uh came up, um, I have some questions about our beach without going into a ton of detail. I mentioned that one of the lawsuits that was on consent today involved someone allegedly getting injured at our beach at night. And this sort of brought to my attention that our beach doesn't close at dusk like all of our other parks do and therefore the city is liable for things that happen to residents at the beach at night. Right, so this is sort of part of the yoga issue too, since that's a also kind of a issue of liability, so correct me if I'm wrong about this, uh, Ms. Jellin. But my my questions are, how late is our beach officially open and are surrounding beaches closed from dusk till dawn? And does it make sense for us to like close from dusk till dawn on our beach?
So my understanding is that there there's signs posted that the beach is open till eleven. Um, you know, obviously our lifeguards are only there for a certain amount of time and then, you know, five o'clock, so they're there till five. I'm, I can't answer the question about neighboring beaches, you know, from a liability standpoint, um, because we have um limitations on lighting and things like that with the sea turtles. You know, from a liability standpoint, you know, my concern is when you have these posted hours, somebody's considered what's called an invitee, you're inviting them, you're saying it's okay to be there. Obviously, a person has to manage their own risk and take precautions, but you know, that that invites a lawsuit if somebody potentially gets hurt, so, you know. In Lynn's world, the perfect scenario would be that the beach closes either at dusk or when the lifeguards leave in order to, and in that case, if somebody were to go to the beach after those hours and were injured, well, they're, you know, they're proceeding under their own risk.
I I I think that we should cha- uh have it have those, absolutely those signs changed and it should be. Yeah, I support dusk as well. I I think I think five's early because there's a lot of people that hang out a little, because we don't get dark until like uh eight, eight fifteen, eight thirty right now. So I would say that we need to have those changed and and just just to limit the liability. I mean, there's always going to be liability and there's always somebody else's responsibility as well, but, you know, it certainly would limit the liability for after hours and somebody, you know, having a a catastrophic fall or something like that.
Yeah, if if you saw the the backup that I provided you, the injury that the person suffered was pretty significant.
It was a, it was also double. It wasn't just one time in the, you know, surgery. It was more than one.
Correct, and you know, we could potentially be responsible for that. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what a jury would do. You know, I I'm not suggesting that, you know, if people are there after the posted hours that, you know, they'd be arrested or anything like that.
No.
Uh, that's not what I'm suggesting. My my only purpose in stating this is that, you know, it would be, you know, you'd be proceeding under your own risk.
Correct, it limits our liability, so.
As long as that's, this is, that's what we're putting in place, yeah.
Yeah, the goal wouldn't be to have no one on the beach after that. It's just that it's not on us.
Yeah, whatever, yep.
Sounds good. Anything else?
One last thing, um, uh, I want to bring up Juneteenth for a minute because it's this week. This, I know this came up somewhere since I got sworn, I can't remember who brought it up, but we've definitely talked about it since I've been here. I'm just not clear on why uh it's not a city holiday. It's my understanding it's a federal holiday and a lot of surrounding cities in the county have this as a paid holiday for their employees. I'm just hoping someone could give me a little context on what the city's stance is on this.
You know, it's funny because we we've had this um discussion many times over and we give other holidays, like just even a holiday you choose. And we put it out there, the city has said that they put it out there, would you rather just go ahead and do Juneteenth versus that? Because it's it's a few hundred thousand dollars to be able to change, make another holiday to the taxpayers with nobody working. So it was not well-received to change, you know, their personal or just an any-day holiday that they can take at any time for Juneteenth. So it was kind of like, we 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 can give you back this one if if you want that one, so, but it just wasn't really crossed over. Otherwise, we're going to take it in the in the uh, it's a, it's an annual event, so it would be that much more every single year. And anybody can take their personal holiday on Juneteenth too. Uh, now, when we were discussing this, it wasn't a, it wasn't a holiday that was considered national holiday at the time. However, again, there's not a national you choose your holiday, um, you know, uh, taking as well, so I think that it should.
Just for the record, the last time I brought up choice, the last time I did bring it up, it was a federal holiday.
Right, but when we first started talking about it way back, it was not at that point in time, because that only just happened, what, a couple of years ago now? How many years?
Right, right.
Yeah, so it has been brought up several times, is what I said to begin with.
Yeah.
Originally, it wasn't even, but we were already talking about it and what was hap- what happened was is that this sitting city manager at the time said, well, it's going to be a trade because we're not talking about, we're talking about a lot of money um to the taxpayers. And that's an annual recurring event, so.
The only option on the table at that time was you lose your floating holiday.
Well, we just switch it. You either say, we're going to do Juneteenth and you won't have a floating holiday, but it gave the option for anybody who didn't want to necessarily, you know, take Juneteenth as their holiday, they could take a different holiday. And then those that wanted Juneteenth as a holiday, that's the holiday that they would choose anyway.
For example, I've had Jewish employees for the city who would come up to me and said, we would rather take Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur off and work on Juneteenth just because they don't observe, but obviously those that observe could certainly take that off.
Those aren't federal holidays.
Well, but.
It was a religious holiday.
Yeah, but they, people observe. That was the rationale behind it.
I would like to, I would like to see us aligned with the federal holidays.
Yeah, I kind of would too, and the county. How is this, is there, is there a way to bring this back up for a full discussion at some point?
And by the way, I wouldn't throw, personally, I wouldn't throw this late curveball into this budget.
Right.
Yeah, it's fine, we could, we could for next year.
I think it's late for that.
Probably during the budget process.
No, no, I mean, the budget we're talking about, right?
Oh, for next year?
Right.
Okay.
I wouldn't even, because.
We could budget, I'm fine with that, yeah.
So if you wanted to put a presentation together, uh, Mr. Moore, where it just shows what the federal holidays are, what our holidays are and where the gaps and differences are, and then we can have a conversation about that. I I would like to do that.
If there's an interest in consensus to have a follow-up to that effect, I would ask that we please do so early in the new fiscal year so as to not compromise the focus and approach of the budget process. So I'm looking at November.
Okay.
And I will work with Human Resources. I already understand what the numbers are in terms of what the cost impacts will be and therefore all considerations can be made. So I would therefore look forward to making this opportunity happen via the November seventh, twenty twenty-three Regla City Commission meeting. So Madam City Clerk, if you can make a note to that effect, we will prepare accordingly. So thank you.
You're walking, Kelly.
I am.
That's crazy, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Long, anything else?
That's all I got, thank you.
All right, very good. I have two things, well, three things. Number one, um, I have gotten so many people that are complaining about the railroad crossings, both at Tenth and Linton being closed at the same time. That's our east-west artery in the south section of Delray Beach. So you either have to go all the way down to Boca to get across or you have to go up to um Atlant- Atlantic, unless, unless you know all the back roads like I do. But it's still been a huge disruption and I don't know that we actually control that. I think it's a, if, but.
That is correct.
It seems to me that they could do it, you know, recognize that those are our two main arteries in the south section and not do them together at the same time or at least, you know, kind of stagger it. I don't know if there's any way that we can, we could have encouraged something different, but it's really been a mess. And I'm going to tell you, I went to a store coming from the west to the east um on federal highway today and I'm tell, it it was like, it was like a ghost town on federal highway in the middle of the day. The middle of the day, there was nobody there, there's nobody in the stores. I thought, wow, there's a lot of people that come from the west that supply the the persons and they're just not coming because of of the difficulty to get from east to, I mean, west to east. All right, second thing is, is we all know that um uh Dolores suffered a huge loss this uh last night. And um, you know, I know that the city will send um whatever, but I think that I I talked with the city um attorney, just making sure that it was something that we could do. I would like to uh propose that we uh do um from the city, from the city commission, a gift of maybe Uber Eats or something because at this time in life, you know, it's the last thing you really want to be thinking about. So if I can get that approval, I'll work it through and we'll we'll do that as a gift from the commission, you know, during this time of need. And um, you know, just it's tough. And then third and finally, um, you guys enjoy the time off. I want you guys to really relax and and really have a great time and we have another little um break a little further into the summer, but um just really take your time off and don't think about the city of Delray Beach, just go enjoy and relax. And everybody else too, um, we're giving you guys a break from us. So thank you guys and have a great uh few weeks.